Welcome to the Casco Township Planning Commission meeting of March 21st. Welcome to all of you. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Dan, can you lead this, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item, approval of the minutes from February 21st. Are there any additions and/or corrections to the minutes? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Make the motion to accept the minutes from February 21st, 2023.
I'll second Gina's second.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, here. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions and/or corrections to the agenda? One thing I would like to do, if it's okay with the planners, is we take the unfinished business number eight and make that number nine, and make number nine the new business number eight. Any, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, yeah, for the Planning Commission agenda, switching eight and nine reverse.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Gina. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, here. Communication. Do we have any communication right now that we should discuss? Okay. We will move on to discussion from the floor. And this gives our Casco Township residents a chance to talk to us about some of the items that may be on their mind in their neighborhood. So if you have something you'd like to discuss with us, please step forward to the podium, give your name and your address.
Did you think about the Chesterfield Township thing? Did you address that?
Did I?
Yeah.
No, no I.
Yeah, just on the communication. They give you a heads up what Chesterfield Township is planning to do on their southwest corner of County Line there on 26 Mile Road. So just something to learn your information.
And basically what this is, Joe, is a public hearing.
Yeah.
And they're outlining the pieces of property.
Right.
They're looking at for maybe some kind of rezoning out or something.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, and Steve, we should maybe just take a gander at that when we look at our.
Their meeting is going on right now.
Right.
Their meeting is going on right now.
Their meeting is going on right now.
Oh, 21st, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks, Joe. All righty. So do we have some folks who would like to address the Planning Commission? Yes.
I'm PJ Gardner.
Can I ask you to step up, please?
I'm PJ Gardner. I live over on Puttigott, Pitts Palms. I want to know who is responsible for posting meeting minutes of this.
For posting the minutes or?
Posting the minutes on the website. I used to be able to go look at the meetings. Who's responsible?
Yeah, well, that's, I ensure supervisor gets to the clerk's office and then the clerks put it up there on it.
There has been nothing posted since January of 2022.
Yeah, there was, we had some absences or that. They will be posted tomorrow morning.
For, from February of 2022 to date?
What's that?
From February of 2022.
Well, February, January 2022 and February 2023. I'll have to look into the other minutes.
Okay, I was gonna say, because there's nothing that's been posted. There's been no meeting minutes.
Since.
So when we can't make it, it's really hard for me to get to these.
Since last year.
And I know this for a lot of people.
Since last year?
Yes, I went and looked this morning.
Okay.
And the last one, they had been posted like a year ago.
Oh.
Over a year ago. So I was just curious how that works.
Yeah, it would get corrected.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yes, thank you. You guys should address them.
Other folks that'd like to do, have some discussion with us? Okay? And we will move on to our next agenda item. Public hearing. We do not have a public hearing this evening, but Steve, we have the other hoop building coming up.
That's scheduled for our next meeting. It's been published in the paper. It's at seven o'clock on our next meeting in April.
Okay. And folks, that's for, we had a number of discussions on the hoop building and how that relates to our auxiliary buildings in the code. So that will be coming up at our next meeting. And if you have some interest in that, please come. All righty. We're going to jump to number, which was number nine, which is now number eight, new business, which is our site plan review for shipyard development. Do we have a representative from Shipyard Development here? Hi, guys.
Hello.
Would you step up, second? Would you step up to the podium, please?
Hi, Sean Beck, Shipyard Development and Retail Contractors.
Corey Ames, Shipyard Development, ECF company.
Great, thanks, guys. All right, well, could you give us, I'm sorry, could you give us a little brief description of what you plan on doing there? And then we'll take it from there, okay?
My father bought a property and started Shipyard Development, I don't know, some 2005, 2006, I'm not sure how long ago. He passed away in 2014. We purchased the LLC from my mother and from the estate last year. And my intention is to build a 10,000 square foot warehouse building for storage of, I have a construction company and, uh, for storage and possibly sell some other spaces to some other trades for the same type of purpose, for storage. Nobody's gonna be actively, for me, I don't have any active employees in the building. I'm just gonna be using the building for storage.
And I did notice, though, that you had 10 full employees outlined in your application.
Yeah, our engineer recommended we had put something down. We have a potential tenant negotiation in progress based on, you know, when we can be able to deliver the building. And they were looking at two employees for 25% of the building. So for 25% of the, they're looking at two employees. So I'm looking at taking a minimum of 25%, I might take 50% of the building for myself. And there'll be no employees for me, it's just gonna be storage. My old office was at 26 and County Line on the opposite side of the road, so on the, I read Township, side of the road, the red brick building with the green metal roof. So I used to operate my office there. My lease is up in October, but I've moved my, um, my office staff to Marine City. So we're in downtown Marine City now with our full office staff. And my company operates in all 50 states. I have an office in Port Ritchie, Florida, an office in San Juan, Puerto Rico, and office in Cape Creek, Arizona. So we're a national company and the purpose for the building for us would just be storage of materials and equipment.
Will you, it looks like you're trying to open the building this year.
Yes.
And in doing so, and I just, on the floor plan, there was no restrooms indicated or that type of thing.
Well, from what I understood, we're in for site plan approval, so I didn't do a building permit application. We did, also, we don't know our renter, you know, if we're gonna have that other 25% to somebody, we don't know what they would possibly use. So who's the engineer that has, we've got the architect on staff. We're ready to move to construction drawings upon site plan approval, but until we had something there, we didn't wanna put the cart before the horse, I guess. As far as the design, we weren't sure if there's gonna be any recommendations, things that need to be changes. So we're just kinda waiting to get your feedback before we move to the next step.
All right, well, planners, any other questions?
What kind of materials are you gonna put?
It's a clean gear metal building with masonry along the.
I think it was inside, let's see, sort of, let me start.
Interior.
Like scaffolding?
Yeah, scaffolding. I'm a commercial general contractor, so ceiling tile, floor tile. Most of it's quick in out, so anything that we get shipped in, we try to get out to the field. So it's kind of a temporary holding house. I probably be able to bring my boat in and work on my boat at some certain times of the year, so.
So it's not gonna be construction equipment, like trucks or anything like that?
No, we don't, I'm a interior contractor, so I don't do any, I don't have, you know, bobcats or any of that type of equipment.
The only thing you probably have is just a forklift to unload the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've got an interior forklift.
Other questions? And as, as we go through this process, we'll have to look at it from the standpoint that right now it's just gonna be storage. And when you know you have a tenant, obviously you're gonna have to come in with some kind of architectural plan, obviously, to get that approved.
Yeah, we understand. And I'm in the business, so I'm adept to it. So what I would see is if I get site plan approval, I will present a, a construction plan that includes the space that I plan on occupying myself. And we may go ahead and define a demised configuration for a tenant in the space. I guess we have, we have a few questions, I guess, from, from our standpoint. We've heard at least talk that there was gonna be water in sewer going down 26 Mile at some point, and our county commissioner or road commissioner mentioned they might be trying to fund a project to do something of that nature. So we're just, right now, from our engineer, I understand, we would have to apply to get water from across 26 Mile and go to the septic field. So we're trying to find out if there's a timeline towards something like a sewer, what that might look like, because we're, at least in my personal use of the building, I really don't need any bathrooms or anything, anything but just cold storage.
And just to let you know, we're, we're well within our, as a matter of fact, tonight, we're going to be discussing our five-year plan, our zoning plan, which relates to and will relate to the corridor, Marine City Highway corridor, which is a huge, huge change, if you will, on the basis, and that's why some of our folks are really glad to understand what's going on. So, very good.
Does that even apply to us or no?
At this point?
We're still far off from where we're gonna say like. Well, yeah, you also kind of see that because of the way that there's some wetlands at the 26 Mile frontage of the property, we're basically at this point banning it. I'm kind of inheriting the, the property, you know, we bought it, the partnership, it's still, it's just been in the family for a number of years, trying to do something purposeful with it. And I need a warehouse, so that's why I decided to put the warehouse all the way backwards, backside of the property. If there is significant improvement on 26, you know, at some point, we, you know, we might try to look at what we can do if there's any way to offset those wetlands and do anything. But right now, our complete plan is one 10,000 square foot building at the location on the grounds.
So you just have the five acres?
Yeah, like six, six point something.
Oh, okay, okay.
But yeah, we're, we're out to the, out to the road. But it's really completely unusable at this point, so we're not gonna.
Your access wasn't off of 26 Mile?
No, our access is up of.
Oh, it went the opposite.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks, guys. Steve? Can you give us a little rendition of what?
Sure. All right, as you know, this property is owned industrial. It's on the northwest corner of Marine City Highway and Bee Way Road. It's 4.62 acres. The application says it's for shipyard development, industrial building, contractor storage. And we reviewed this proposal consistent to the zoning ordinance and the provisions of the zoning ordinance. We look at setbacks. All the setbacks have been met from Marine City Highway and from Bee Way Road, also the rear yard setbacks, backyard setbacks, and all the building, all meets current code. Parking requirements, as shown on the site plan, the all, the number of spaces required, the very free parking spaces required, and the width and length of the parking spaces, and also the maneuver lane, that's all met. The, the developer or the applicant has shown extensive landscaping on the property, including around the parking lot and then affrontages. In fact, landscape plan that they provided indicates a total of 72 evergreen shrub trees and other plantings along Bee Way. Additional landscaping is shown along the parking lot islands, and there's a three-foot high berm also included on the plans. Lighting has been shown, lighting is shielded, so it complies with our ordinance. One of our issues, or not issues, we have a question. There is no trash receptacle shown on the site plan. If there's going to be one utilized, it has to be shown. If not, we would need to know the method of trash that will be, how will be collected. The foreplants and building elevations have been provided. Our ordinance requires that the portion of the building that fronts the main road, major road or secondary road, be of decorative material. We are requiring, they do show that some kind of decorative masonry on the eastern elevation around Bee Way. However, they don't indicate how it's going to be, you know, what exact treatment's going to be. And we also have per ordinance, although the Planning Commission can waive it because of the distance, but per ordinance, they're also required to show decorative treatment, masonry treatment along the south frontage, south building elevation along Marine City Highway. The, there has been no signs shown in the site plan or no details for the sign that the developer, just needs to be known that if at the time he determines that they're gonna put up a sign, that they have to comply with regulations and seek a building permit, or sign permit. Based on that, we recommend approval, subject to, oh, here was one issue. If there's gonna be any outside contractors' equipment, it's gotta be shown on the site plan where it would be located. So in that case, if a new property, a new developer or a new occupant comes in and is gonna store some equipment out there, the site plan would need to be revised to show that. If, again, if the trash receptacle is utilized, it must be gonna cut out of the plan, and we wanna know the type of decorative masonry that will be installed on the east and south building elevation.
Okay. Planners, any other questions? Or Steve?
Well, you can ask, go back to him, or are you gonna have a trash, a trash thing up there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll add trash, been to the plan, to the site plan. It would, we'd be towards the north of the property. Where the property, we would add it. I'll have Eric, who is being in tune with what your regulations are, add it for, for what's allowable. And I guess we would like to get some consideration on not decorative on the south side of the building, because from 26 Mile with the wetlands and the grass, you can't even see this building, you won't be able to see this building from 26 Mile. So it seems kind of senseless to go in and invest in trying to decorate it.
How many acres of wetland?
It's shaded on the plan, I can't.
It says 4.62.
Acre and a half.
Yeah.
That's really patchy little.
Yeah, it's kind of a patchy shape.
It's probably in those terms.
Yeah, I mean, we're set so far back from the road that it's, you know, I guess we'll take whatever consideration to give us, but we'll, you know, we're gonna come up with probably a split face block or a brick front for the, for the, for the beaten, beat the face of the building.
We'd really like to encourage you to put the brick on the south side, and one of the reasons being is the corridor. Everyone along that corridor in Casco Township is gonna have that same issue. Our ordinance, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but doesn't speak to the fact of the depth of your book.
Right, I guess, I actually just do a hand tooling, help the piece on the front, it's garbage. I mean, that I won't have any frontage on 26 Mile. I guess that was part of the frustration when we started this process, is we thought we were gonna build a quarter building on 26 Mile, which seems really frustrating.
True, that you all agree with.
Yeah, to build a.
And I totally understand. The, that's where we're coming from, or at least that, that's kind of, that's in the planning stage with us and what's happening along that corridor. And what we might be able to do is even help you maybe with a little bit less landscaping, you know, and do maybe a couple of those types of things. But it's an important feature that we're trying to maintain.
Right, and I understand where you're coming from, it's just, like you said, we're not even allowed to do anything with that. Cut the grass, can't do anything with that. That's just gonna be what it is up there for you. And it's some very strange, you know, at some point, it used to be a creek that used to run along, there's a 26 Mile Road, and that's why they're calling it up.
That, that creek's been gone, so now we're just like a little pond.
We're the last piece left that nobody covered up.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Other questions? Planners?
Yeah. What's the consideration for the south side facing? What are you gonna do there?
Well, it's, it, what we're trying to do is be consistent within the corridor.
Yeah.
There's nothing that I'm aware of in our ordinance, whether the building is 60 feet back, 80 feet back, 100 foot back, whatever it is, that is part of what we have as far as our ordinance is concerned. They, and this is going to be up to you, how you folks present your motion. They could go, you know, to the ZBA and check with the ZBA if they would be allowed.
Is that what they would have to do, get a?
Depending on how your motion goes. So that, that's a consideration. I know that's tough. I, believe me, I hear you.
Well, our hope would be someone with more resources than us would, like CVS would buy it and take that. They'll pay the wetland somewhere else.
I guess the real, the real consideration for me for why I would prefer not to put the masonry on that face is that if we ever wanted to expand the building, we would continue to expand towards 26 Mile, and then we would decorate that face until we reach the maximum. So we've set the building as far back to the, to the north as we can, so that we can leave ourselves with the possibility of expansion if.
Would you really expand on the same building or?
Yeah, I think we'd expand on the same building. It's, it's expandable building, so it's the, kind of the whole concept. And that's why, you know, you do the masonry on the beating side of the road, it's, that's staying, you know, that's not gonna be expanded on. If we were to go the other way, we'd basically be having to then demolish or leave a concrete wall in the middle of the building, and a decorative concrete wall in the middle of the building, and then move the bill, you know, move the building forward. And, and that would be based on, you know, what the absorption rates, from what we see right now, there's not a lot of commercial space like this available on the corridor. So, you know, the potential for us to be doing a site plan, a, a new site plan with an expansion down the road is there. And if we put the masonry in, it doesn't make it impossible, but it does make it, you know, some of that cost would be kind of wasted.
With all the doctor's offices and all that, we think a medical supplier might confirm us and want offices facing, somebody else might wanna face 26 with a building, you know, like for advertisement. We don't, we don't do advertising, you know?
But if there's all that wetland?
They'll buy it, they'll buy it somewhere else and.
Yeah, it can be, I mean, there, there's ways to mitigate the wetlands. You can purchase a different piece of my cells and trade them, I'm sure you're familiar with some, some of that. But we're not interested in doing it at this point. All we wanna do is this building. We just wanna leave our options open for, you know, moving, moving forward, especially if you've got a five-year plan and, and 26 Mile, you know, has some significant improvements, there might be more value to, to the expansion of the building at that point.
And like I said, there might be something we can do, just, the landscaping is great, don't get it wrong. The, but maybe we can reduce the landscaping to help, like cost factor to some degree. So there might be, you know, a marriage there between all of us. But that's up to the plan.
I don't have a problem with their desire of wanting to move the south side out. I mean, their entrance is clearly marked off of, and if they were ever trying to put an entrance in, they're really have to come back to us anyway, right?
Yeah.
So then at that point, we can address the south side of the building if. Yeah, I mean, there's a good chance that the expansion might not even be additional warehouse. It could just be that a masonry front comes in and there's a, like a lean-to off of it with office space for, for the expansion. It's just not what I currently need or, or have to do. That's why if we, you know, we understand we'd have to come back for any type of an expansion to site plan or view again, and that at that point, anything we do to the south is gonna have to be.
Toward the grid.
Have to be, yeah, masonry decorated, and that's the intent. It's just not to kind of block ourselves in at this point.
Would you be willing to put some stone on, on the, on the corners, on each of the corners of the building? Six foot, you know, a six-foot section, something that architect would design? Sure. And, and that takes, that helps us a little bit.
I understand where you're coming from too, yes, 'cause you're telling everybody else on 26, yeah.
We're, we're going to have a number of people coming through our doors. And some of these, some of these are going to be negotiated, just like what we're doing here to some extent. So you'd be willing to do that if, if that's what the planners wanted to do? You know, maybe it would be just a six-foot or an eight-foot turn, just to wrap a corner, you know, Dan, and, and we've got at least that, that feature.
Could be a nice accent, so they're already there, you have the landscaping, that's all four corners, you know?
And Steve, and maybe, you know, I'm not trying to, maybe there's a little we can do with the landscaping.
Yeah, I was just looking up the ordinance provision, and it says the planning commission may, may waive the material requirements in, in terms of other types of options.
So maybe they're, they have some landscaping on the site, you know, that could be changing. And I think you stated there was a number of landscape growies, if you will.
Yeah, they have extensive landscaping along, you know, you can even take some of that and move it too.
Or just take it out.
Right.
Does that make a little bit of sense, guys?
Yeah.
Well, planners, I'm not trying to make a motion, but do what you think is best. We're waiting for the motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of a site plan for Shipyard Development LLC, industrial building and contractor storage yard. I'm with, with, I don't know what you wanna call it, but added, where they have to show the trash location and code, make sure you have the code on them on the front. And the type of facing that you're gonna use on the east side, and adding six-foot sections on north and south corners. Dated 2024-23, or 2024-23.
East and west corners?
At the east and west.
Or north and south.
North and south.
North and south.
You're already doing it on the front.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, go in the front, okay.
Two on, on, on north and south corner.
Okay, great, yeah. Okay, great, yeah.
May I ask one quick question?
Go ahead. You want to add some?
Well, no, I just wanted to ask this, you know, would it be possible then to have maybe Steve look at the landscaping? And they didn't see this because darn it, we tried to add more landscaping, but to reduce some of the landscaping?
Yeah. I mean, add it in.
Do you may want to readjust the landscaping to accommodate?
Yeah, and, and have, uh, our planner, uh, relook at landscaping to, uh, accommodate the, does that make sense?
Okay, is there a second to that motion also? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Care. Thank you. I agree with you. Thank you for your, for your help. Um, tell Mr. Nichols I said hi and, uh, just tell him he knows what we need, okay?
Yep.
He's a good guy.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sean, is your mother, is your mother Fran?
Yes.
Is she a quarter?
Yes, she is.
I know her. Can you tell her I say hi to you?
I sure will.
Those quarters, it's a small world.
When I saw her name, I said, that name sounds familiar.
Sewer, you know, sorry.
Regina.
Regina?
All right, thanks a lot.
Um, if I, chairman, if I just, um, the meant thing that's been corrected, um, and I looked at, I misspoke. Um, that portion of it, the clerk does handle, you know, records that. But this portion was up to, um, supervisor to get it to the, um, to get it to the assistant planner there so she could post on the website. So, but that's been corrected.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. All right. We have that. And thanks, thanks, thanks planners, everybody, for helping us through that. I think it was a good, I think it was a good solution all the way around. Um, let us go to unfinished business, which is the master plan, the five-year update. Steve, can you take over on that, please?
Sure. The, as you're aware, the township board approved the, uh, contract with my firm to prepare the master plan update. We expect the process will kick off in April and it'll take approximately a year. The all-state standards of, uh, notifications and sharing the plan with, uh, the public and holding public meetings and, uh, having a sixty-three day review period and all mandatory requirements of the state Michigan planning enabling legislation. Uh, the legislation tells us pretty much all the procedures we got to follow and some of the components of the plan, which is usually things like the community spot snapshot, which is the demographics inventory of the township, uh, dealing with residential and agricultural properties, business and industrial, community services, traffic and mobility, and then looking and culminating in a map, a future land use plan and map. It kind of shows how you expect the township to develop in the future. And then from that plan, uh, various zoning decisions would be made in the future. Uh, we're expecting that, like I said, we'll start this process at the next meeting. We'll have a kickoff meeting with the planning commission. We will recommend to you online survey questions so we can get this going right away. Survey questions for the public to answer, you know, regarding what they think about increased industrial, what they think about preservation of farmland, all the questions that are important to people and, uh, those kind of things. Uh, from there, we'll review the survey results. We'll start, we'll host a public meeting. We seek their input in that regard. We're on the, we're going to be on TV. We'll post all the, uh, the monthly information that we prepare and the planning commission prepares on the website. And probably above July, we'll start preparing the actual chapters of the master plan. And each month we'll come back with it and review with the planning commission and the public so nobody's ever surprised. Once, uh, towards the end of the year, when we have all the draft plan completed, we'll, uh, what's required by the state is the planning commission would approve the draft plan and send it to the township board to authorize its distribution. And what that means is when it's distributed, uh, the township board would say, we agree with it and we're going to send it to all surrounding communities, to the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, who's our, our regional planning agency, St. Clair County, and all the public utilities and school districts to review the plan. They then have sixty-three days, and I have no idea where sixty-three days comes from, but, uh, they have sixty-three days to review the plan, make comments back to us. We then would hold a public hearing, hopefully adopt the plan that meets everybody's needs and the public is happy with. And, uh, then we would forward it to the township board for them to adopt the plan.
So the public hearing is at the very end, right?
Public hearing is at the very end. But there's also, every meeting's open to the public and we'll have public, uh, information meetings.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as you can tell, it's quite a process that we're going to have to go through. There's a lot of information. One of the, probably one of the real good things, good matter of diffuses, the Marine City Highway Corridor, uh, the studies that have been done, the information that we're going to need, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but a lot of the information we're going to have to gather, um, actually some of that the county already has. You know, the, the traffic, uh, population growth, all those kinds of things that, that we're involved with here and, and in Casco Township. So that, that's a good thing. Um, as Steve said, all these meetings are, are open to you. We will make sure that that gets, uh, held to the public, right, Joe? And we'll do it a couple of different ways. Uh, so with that, um, I'm going to ask the planners if they have some questions right now and then we will turn it open to get some comments from the public. Everybody kind of understands the plan, but it's, it's a long process. Okay, then we will, um, entertain some comments from the public if they'd like to come to the podium, give their name and address and, um.
I just got a question. Come and stand up over there. They rarely have forty-eight, forty-eight miles. Um, I just had a question when you said about it goes to the other townships and like in whole county or just like bordering townships?
Bordering townships.
And so they can, if they don't approve what we want to do, what is, how does that, if they can reject it or no?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
They just get a chance to look at it.
Oh, so they can't say, well, we don't like what you're doing, so you need to fix it?
They can say that.
Oh, but we don't have?
And the planning commission can, can consider, but they're not recorded.
Okay, okay.
Who'd you say your name was?
Nick Graber.
Thank you.
One of the things, Nick, that, that came out of our last meeting, um, was there was, and Steve's going to lead us through this, I think, with the lessons of the county, is try and get the, the townships together. And as they have, we're all talking about your study sessions, so we kind of know what they're doing, they know what we're doing. And they'd like to see the corridor be have some, some nature of congruity throughout. So that's one of the things that we're going to be discussing with our, with our fellow townships. How all that's going to shake out, I don't know. Um, but, um, that's why we're doing all this. We want everybody to have a chance to speak and to let us know what they think and how this goes forward. Does that make a little bit of sense what we're up?
Yeah.
The twenty-six corridor, there, it definitely is going to be, um, kind of like twenty, or not twenty-six, um, like Hall Road or twenty-three. It's not going to be housing complexes. It's going to be just retail stores or factories, stuff like that.
We don't know yet, uh, to be honest with you. We, we're, we've got obviously a pretty good idea of our master plan and, um, where our zoning, our industrial zoning is, how that's going to work out, quite frankly, with, with Ira. Because we will be getting our water, right, Joe, from Ira. And, uh, there will be, um, a, a number of things that we have to share our information. And I guess I have, Steve, can our folks get online and get this, the Marine City Highway Corridor projection?
It's available online.
It's all available online at the St. Clair County website. It's been posted on Nextdoor. I actually think, I don't know if I posted all those links on our Facebook page, but I can. And if you read through the whole thing, there are concerns that, you mentioned water. Ira and China, I don't think they have it. Where are we going to get more water?
Well.
You know, that seemed to be a big concern.
Yeah, I'm going to, Joe, you want to jump in?
Yeah, Ira Township does have water from county line to Meldrum Road loan Marine City Highway.
But enough to share. The, the concern was if we, Casco or China, you know, East China, keep going east, right? And, and everybody on the north who's, who has enough public water, they don't have enough.
Yeah, as far as I know right now, the, um, there's plans in, at least very, very preliminary plans in place.
Somebody's thinking about the fact that we don't have enough.
Right. And also, Ira Township, I mean, there's a board of commissioners are wanting some board of commissioners to loan Ira Township. Was it twenty-three million dollars of the ARPA money? That's the money that the county got for COVID to build a new wastewater treatment plant to, because the current one.
Yeah, that was going to be on twenty-six, right? They would have been on twenty-six mile.
Well, I'm not sure of the location of Ira Township, but the current one that services parts of Ira Township, Clay Township at Alga, that's fifty years old at its capacity.
Right, right.
And now they want to put a new state-of-the-art one.
Yeah, I heard they wanted to put that on twenty-six.
It could be. It could very well be. But they're also, they would, uh, seek additional funds to extend sewer line um, down, let me see, highway from Beethy. Initially, they set the Starville Road and Cochran Town.
You're talking King Road now.
Maybe. Whether they get the money or not, that's another question.
Right.
And, uh, this is why we're doing the master plan, I'm, um, saying.
Do we intend or foresee, and can I, can I just, can we just discuss or do I have to be informal about it?
No, feel free.
Um, I've been doing tons of reading on the corridor project and I know our master plan carries industrial, I think is it to Meldrum, right? And then the wave trim study recommended the same thing, no changes basically, right? When they were brought in for the Marine City Corridor. So there's a couple of people, you know, I want this, I want this. There's a lot of discussion that needs to be had about it, right?
Well, that's true. They're, that surprised a lot of people that what they recommended was basically match the master plans of the four townships already.
Yeah.
However.
There's a couple of commissioners who are pushing for this, right?
Right, but if you put, if there's a sewer line down and water, I mean, water and sewer, that's a game changer there. You could have property owners in those areas.
Paying, we're all going to pay our taxes though.
Well, I'm just, I mean.
It's like that quality of life thing. I moved out.
Mr. Kasten could explain it better where sometimes when those services are available and you have land that doesn't quite as, um, master planned or zone for it, people could sometimes challenge us in court and take us to court saying that use is more suited because of those services for, let's say, industrial or commercial use rather than for agricultural use. That's what we're, we're here with the master planning, where we have a good, solid master plan for, for Casco Township involving the residents, we could determine how, if that growth comes, how it goes. And we guard most of the townships, the rural identity that we all.
Yeah, I mean, I moved out here. I looked at all of this before I even came here. I mean, it's a quality of life issue, right? And we are seeing more new people. We're seeing things being subdivided, new houses going up. Our population is growing slowly. But people are coming here because they're like me. This is the life that I want. I did, I didn't come here to change anybody's way of life, right? Um, the woods, the wildlife, the app, I don't care if I could get on a tractor on Palm, behind tractor on Palm's Road, I love it, right?
Yeah, but if we, as a township, guide that development the best we can, will mitigate a lot of the impact of it.
Can we?
What's that word?
We, you know, it takes a lot of firmness, I think, to accomplish these things. Um, maybe sometimes you even have to like play dirty because these people are going to play dirty, I can guarantee. They're already playing dirty to get what they want, some of them, you know, not everybody, not everybody. And I understand you want to take advantage, but if, if the township as a whole says, hey, this is a great place. This is exactly how we want it. Why do we have to change anything? That's always my question. Who gets to say that what we want has to change, right?
Well, the best person when it comes to this answer is a gentleman sitting at the end. He's a professional planner with many years of experience behind him and he's here to guide us through this.
Right, right. So I want to know if, if, if the majority of people in Casco, like the wave trim study, and then they did those online studies for the Marine City Corridor or, I mean, State Community City, the Highway Corridor, eighty-four percent of fifteen hundred respondents said, no, we don't want this, right? So if the people of Casco, majority of the, majority of people in Casco said, no, we don't want this, can we hold firm? Can we keep our way of life? Or is that like, you know, progress is inevitable?
But wouldn't it be better if we get involved and do what we want to do than just say no?
But if what we have, if you look at our master plan and we say, yeah, we can handle, it's some industrial to Meldrum and, you know, I drive now and I pay attention to these things. I'm like, it's going to change, right? If, if we really did build all the way to Meldrum on twenty-six, things are going to look very different, right? And this is always going through my head.
But.
Okay, but we had that plan.
What do you say is not going to change then? Because if there's already a master plan, it already shows it there. If people start building the, the factories or they're going to build on twenty-six mile, it's, it's going to change, but it's already set to change.
Right, 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 right. Then that's what I'm saying. We have our plan and we've said, this is where it can happen. So it's like, you know, you're prepared.
So you don't have a problem with our current master plan?
I do not have a problem. But I do when I'm looking at like the county and stuff and, or they're talking, oh, I'm thinking, oh, they're going to put a subdivision in Adair, you know, somebody's going to sell their farm and they're going to let a subdivision go in there. And it's like, no, I live pretty close to Adair. I don't have to get into it.
We, we have our five acre rule that we, I've noticed.
But it's green.
We're, we're pretty hard fast on still.
It's, no, it's, it's like two and a half.
Well.
Seven five. I wish it was five.
It depends on what district you are.
Because it's like half a house per acre and a thing.
I remember down that way, down on Meldrum, there was a guy that was complaining because he couldn't break his lot down.
Yeah, because.
He had four parcels, because he, and he wanted one driveway.
That's.
To split it and the township said, no.
Yeah.
Because one has to have their own.
Because he's an egg zoning.
Okay.
And that's like point two-five per acre or something.
The big danger of that, I grew up here. I give myself a few minutes every day morning to loss of the Casco Township by one snow. Every new house that's built makes.
I cry and I just pray that they're like me.
Every, every new house that's built on land that was once farmland or woods tends to make Casco a little bit less rural, a little bit more suburban in nature. That's the fact of the game.
I, believe me, my house is from eighteen fifty. I'm over there at seventy-six, seventy-six, right?
But if they bring water and sewer past Meldrum Road.
We're screwed.
Well, the, that's.
I'm sorry, I'm.
That's where we, if we develop a master plan to guide it, say, hey, if that occurs, we would only allow development in this so far into the township.
Okay, but then, you know, what does that do for our grandchildren? You know, then they're going to say, well, let's just take a little bit more. Let's take a little bit more. I mean, I just hate this part. I, I'm sorry, because I really love it here. You have no idea, you know?
How long have you lived, how long have you lived there?
I bought seventy-six, seventy-six Plaidut in twenty fifteen and we're fixing her up. She's coming back to life, just put in a new well and I want to stay. I would like to be carried out of that house feet first. It was Palm's property back in, when it was deeded over. I mean, I know, I've got the deed. I know who bought it from the government, right, and all that. And Palm's owned it. The land, and it was flat.
Yeah, the communities that ignore, um, pressures like that tend to end up, when development happens, it's not what they want.
Yep.
So.
So we have to give a little bit? I, I just don't want to give it all. I'm sorry. I really, honestly, that's how much I love it here. I, I'm, I'm done. You know, I think we have a good plan. Our growth is enough, you know, I don't want, there would, if you read the master plans, they talk about paving church and paving Beethy.
Well, no, okay, the master, that Beethy, Beethy Road we paved only a half mile, that's in our industrial zone right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Church Road, that's been a long-term county plan for decades and some of.
And it's a horrible road and now let's keep it that way, please.
But Church Road is a counted road. Meldrum Road entails several, about ten years ago, for parts of it was, uh, limestone. Now it's that. Church Road, eventually, eventually, it's in a long-range county plan, not township. The county plan is to pave Church Road, but that's been.
You look what happened when we finished paving Meisner, right? The racetrack. I wouldn't want to live on, on a paved road out here like that.
I don't think.
Unless I was really, 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 like half a mile back from the road.
It took them thirty years to pave that stretch.
I, I wouldn't.
That stretch.
I wouldn't.
South of twenty-six on Church.
I mean, I wouldn't bank on them paving Church Road. If they did, it would be between Marine City Highway and Meisner.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just.
And that's probably a big stretch.
You know, I'm, it's like when you, when you're in business, you got scope creep of your projects, right? It's never what you think. So, you know, my question to you guys, I mean, I grew up in an HOA place. I understand all this, but at the same time, I'm like, this is our house, you know? Why does somebody get to tell us what to do?
Well, this, this plan we're doing, this process we're going through, you as a resident, Casco will have a voice in it, okay?
Do you guys anticipate a lot of change to our master, to the way the master plan is today?
I don't see a whole lot.
I don't think so.
No.
There, there are things in the master plan. There are things in the master plan that, quite frankly, I've been here for a few years, that need to be adjusted and changed. So that is going to be one of the things that I'm, I'm going to be looking at. The, uh, the question you brought up originally, we really didn't give Steve a chance maybe to comment as far as what the overall perspective really is. And the idea of this corridor for some people is very important for livelihoods.
They're talking about bringing in people from Macomb County, jobs from, for, for people in Macomb, it has nothing to do with St. Clair.
Well, let's look at.
If they really wanted St. Clair employment, they'd be up on like Range Road and 94, right, more towards Maryville and stuff.
We've got 40% of our population that drives out of Casco every day. Now.
When I go in, if I go in.
I did.
I don't mind.
And we, and we make that choice, right?
Yes, I, I said, I work here and I'm going to buy within an hour's drive.
I just kept paying my gas and rocking and rolling. But all that being said, um, I, I hope, and I understand, believe me, I understand everything from you. But I hope you'll look at the overall perspective of what the county is trying to do and where all this is going to end up.
I think there's conflicts of interest at the county level.
There's, there's going to be some.
Serious conflicts of interest.
This, which we have to do. And we saw a little bit, hopefully, of that tonight, where we had a gentleman come in with a building. And we were able to work things out, if you will. Um, and we were able to, I think he walked out fairly.
Yeah, it's not going to change our way of life, it's zoned, it's not, and what he's proposing is reasonable and you guys are willing to work and that's how it should be, right?
But you've got a large township on the other side of us to the west that is letting a lot of different businesses in. Like it or not, we're their neighbors and we're going to feel some of that effect. There's no two ways about that.
Yeah, we also live in an era, and right now where their hope, and some of the board commissioners, is to land these big manufacturing jobs, like you have the Magna Project on Range Road in St. Clair and St. Clair Townships. It's now these companies, they pit communities against one another, it's all about tax base. Communities fight each other for tax base.
But we're not going to, our taxes are going to go up.
Well, let me finish.
Okay.
And then these communities, they'll pro, they'll have, bring in um, the services, water and sewer. And, and some communities give them the property. And then they give them a tax break on top of that.
Yeah, and we don't pay for it. It's ridiculous.
When I drive through Detroit, there is plenty of space that I wish it would get redeveloped. But that takes combining real estate, that's expensive, and cleaning it up, it's expens, these companies don't want to deal with that. They want to go to pristine ground, build their facility and be in business. And they, they just don't play communities, they play states against one another.
I want, out of partnership, buying a car because I sat down to sign and it was $50 over what I told them I was paying cash for. We'd come to a deal and they came, they gave me the papers and it was $50 over for the license plate and I just told them, no. I said, out the door to drive down the street and not just drive it on your lot. And I went home and they called me and said, okay, fine, we'll eat the $50.
There you go.
I mean, and that's, I've been like that since I was 20. You know, so that, that's where I'm coming from. It's like, I, I don't care what somebody else wants or says, you know, we have to live here. The fallout's all on us. And when those businesses come in, you give them all the tax breaks, all the abatements, and who ends up paying for it? We do. We have no quality of life, our taxes go up. I don't think it's worth it personally, but I'm going to fight, right? And I will tell whoever, I don't care. If it doesn't want to say it to somebody, my role in this world is to state the obvious.
And you're sure. Steve, give me the comments I have to tell you.
Yeah, uh, there's no doubt that the best defense on stopping development or controlling development is a, a well-done master plan that involves the community.
Now, then ours dates back to 20, 2003, is that what I read?
That's the first one. Then there's been updates since.
Okay, so this is, is this just like a normal?
Not drafts, but the planning commission is, and recertified it.
Okay, and, and we're due for that, right? I mean, this is like a.
This is a one update.
Yeah. Yeah, why, why we're doing this is, the last time we went through this process, like you said, it was in 2003.
Okay.
Well, every five years are required to look at it and, and so far, we just did minor adjustments.
Okay, but now it's like revisit the whole thing. I get it.
Right, because of what's potentially could happen. That's why we're doing this.
Good, I know, okay.
Okay, Steve, go ahead, please.
So, if you have a well-done master plan that has community input and you base your zoning request or development request on that master plan, courts have typically upheld a community's right to do that. I say typically, because not all the time.
Right, right.
I grew up, I mean, I've lived in Clinton Township now for 45 years, right off Hall Road. I moved to Hall Road because it was decent quiet there. It was all residential and all farms, okay?
Yeah, I work with the guy who's.
I was concerned that, you said it's Macomb Township, county people coming here, it was Wayne County people coming there. So I don't want to tell anybody that you're ever going to stop it totally. But you have a much better chance if you plan accordingly.
Okay, and that's fair. I, that's why I'm here, is to, you know, understand where you guys are coming from, make sure. And I, I hope we're all on the same page.
And I, and I don't anticipate a lot of changes in the master plan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, thank you.
Any, any other comments?
Um, so what is your, all, you know, has to do with it? Um, are you guys for it or against it?
We don't know what to look at yet, we can't answer that.
No, let's just go from like all the conversation that's been going on for the last few months.
I'm going to advise the planning commission not to answer that, because we haven't gone through the process and we want to be fair. We can't.
You know, let's say, let's say it was election tag. I would want to know what their views are.
They're not elected, I'm sorry. They're here, if they're going to do their job correctly, and they know these guys are, they're not going to have any disopinion until they hear from you.
No, I'm just talking on a personal level. I'm not talking on, I'm just talking on a personal level. Like if I was to turn to this lady and ask her what she felt about it, that's all. I want to know if we have to fight the community or if we have to fight the board. Like it's going on in St. Clair, I'm going up to the meetings up there. So there's a couple people like she's stating that have different things in mind. And I just want to know kind of where you guys stand. So I'm just asking someone to be honest, I'm not, they don't want to say anything mine that kind of says something.
What, what exactly are you referring to?
Do you want a 26 mile road, I don't even like the word corridor anymore. Um, do you want it for lanes? Do you want gas stations on every corner? Do you want fast food every corner? Do you want strip malls that become places and then not places? And then another strip mall up, I mean, that's all I'm asking, your personal thing. What do you think about it? What's your, because you guys have more control than say us. I mean, I'm going to be doing petitions, I'm, I want to know when all these meetings are, I'm going house to house in our township. Doesn't matter. I'm just saying, we're us, and that's it. I'm not going to.
I know, but we're only one little corner. You've got four corners. So no matter what we do, if we stop everybody, you're not stopping, you're not stopping that. They're having a meeting right now in Chesterfield Township on that whole thing right between 94 and County Line, right out, right now.
Where you're building the Ascension.
Should have been like that meeting.
They're putting up the Ascension building and there's already a manufacturing plant. I actually looked at that house that we're open.
They're having it right now in Utah. That's where you should be right now.
Well.
That's where the change is going to happen. If you want to stop the 26 thing, that's where you should be.
It's Macomb, Chesterfield's Macomb, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, do we even have a say in Macomb County out of St. Clair?
Say, you're, you're out in the audience, you can say whatever.
Well, I think that to wrap it up, folks, because we're, we're all talking the same thing, we really are. We're just going at it from a different perspective. And our job here right now is to listen to you and you, and get your thoughts of where you believe we need to be. Also, we're going to listen to the other townships and what they've got. We're going to go through this process, that is a year's process, believe it or not. And there's a whole mirror of information that we're going to get. And, and one thing I can guarantee you, the folks on this planning commission will listen to everyone. And they will make up their own mind as to how they think we, we should go. Because at the end of the day, we have to make a, a request to the township board how we feel this should work. And that the other townships are doing the same thing. Joe has instructed us to be very open. And as you can see and tell, uh, with your comment tonight, um, it was a reaction right now. And he wants that to happen sort of well. So that's what we will do. You're not going to hear, uh, you're not going to hear a solution from us, uh, June, July, August, December. It's going to take a year for us to go through this whole process, and we do it for a reason. So that we understand what this corridor means to you, you, and you, me. And also what it means to St. Clair County and probably the state of Michigan. It is, it is big, believe it or not.
If it's going to take us a year to get through redoing a master plan for our township, doesn't that overlap with how fast they want to move on the corridor project?
It may, but we have to follow the guidelines of the state.
Yeah. And we will take slight.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we should speed ours up or anything like that, right? I'm just concerned that, you know, with the other townships, right, obviously.
The county's going to do what they want regardless of what our master plan says.
I'm sorry?
The county's going to do what they want regardless of what our master plan says. We're not going to dictate to them.
The EDA people don't even live in St. Clair County.
All right, folks, we're going to wrap this up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I kind of hijacked your meeting.
You did very well.
But I appreciate the time and the explanation, so I'd like to.
All this process, this is why you'll see this lady at every meeting. I mean, I want, this is going to be posted.
I saw when the, oh, were we going to talk about the trucking companies or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We've got a couple of different agenda items and then we're going to have adjournment, okay? Thank you for coming tonight. Be kindness in the meetings that are coming up. Come to our meetings. We will listen. And we are residents just like you.
I appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Be safe out there, okay?
And we're dismissed.
You folks are.
Well, we can stay.
We concluded that. You can stay if you want, just a couple other things we're going to go through here quickly and then we're going to adjourn. Okay, all right. Steve, anything on the other planners report that you may have?
Just, you know, we've talked over the last couple of years now, the state is taking control away from, uh, communities regarding things like, uh, in the past cell towers and adult foster care and, and now they're looking at taking control away from communities on, uh, short-term rentals and possibly, uh, solar farms. I am going to the, yeah, that's the new one.
Really?
Yep. Uh, I am going to the Michigan Township Association meeting next month. And they're going to have an update on legislative actions. I'll think of a final report for you.
Really? So they want to take?
The governor's office is concerned that the local communities are preempting her agenda for, uh, energy efficiency or whatever you want to call it, so they may be taking control away from local communities on solar farms.
So have they did that yet with the mining operation yet?
Yeah, they're, that's still in legislation right now, along with Airbnb's.
Airbnb's, I don't think would affect Casco, but solar farms and mining wood.
Yes.
That, that means if you, if somebody bought a large chunk of land and wanted to make a solar farm, Casco said no, the state can just say, well, too bad. They're doing it.
If it passes, Casco couldn't even have input out.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I was just trying to find out.
Similar to them building schools, which is why.
I'm sorry.
There's a lot of, yeah, schools, cell towers, prisons, adult foster care homes. It goes on and on. Every time something gets controversial, the state takes it away.
Thanks, Steve.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other report from committee? Steve, anything that you left to share, or Joe, I mean, I'm sorry. Well, okay, better get my people right here.
I do.
I think we're at right in the mood for adjournment. So if anyone would like to make that motion.
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:04?
Oh, thank you, dear. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Approve, carry, thank you.